I would like to.
Six o'clock, call the December 19th meeting to order, ask clerk take roll.
DeVorec?
Here.
Vogel, here. Walters?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
First item in the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I would take a motion, please. Take roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Vogel? Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. It's the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are in a public hearing.
Wish to speak, please come to podium, state your name and address for the record. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard? Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Take a motion, please. Questions or discussion?
Uh, I just wanna acknowledge a couple of the resignations, um, Mike Miller, um, has been involved in a lot, appreciated with the library board. Bill Curry, uh, as well, I think, uh, if there's a definition for folks at Sage, uh, I think Bill Curry and maybe Roland and Anderson could then bill, but, um, appreciate.
Well, between Bill and Chip Capaldo, they probably have fifty years on the board adjustment.
Just so everybody understands why some of those are on there tonight, um, a lot of their terms end at the end of the year. Other than library board, who ends on thirtieth of June, as we have so since learned. So anyway, those are all just appointments due to annual scheduling. And all of these people who were on the reappointments have been contacted, I contacted them and, um, they were all willing to extend their terms another five years. Take a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Got a motion in a second.
Oh, you did? Well, then great, take roll.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Next item, uh, business items, action item A, two thousand nineteen street repairs. First item, resolution two thousand nineteen one one two, approving change order number one in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah, this is essentially for, uh, two reconstruction of two intakes. Uh, one is more of a ma- major, uh, adjustment and then the other reconstruction. This was mentioned last, last month.
Questions, comments, motion? Second, roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item, resolution two thousand nineteen one one three, approving payout number two in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Yeah, it is, essentially, uh, represents, uh, thirty-seven points, or thirty-six point seven percent of the working days used, um, so they've, uh, actually completed more work, work days show right now. Uh, so this, this work completed through the first of December, they did do a little bit of work last week, so there will be a pretty minor payout location that'll take care of this.
Questions, comments, motion?
Subtle.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Motion carries. Item B, resolution two thousand nineteen one one four, authorizing an application for service transportation block grant funding.
I will start and then I will turn it over to Kathleen. We are going to apply for some MPO funding, um, so this funding would be for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, so we are a little ways out. Um, there is the opportunity for the project to get bumped up, um, but that would be dependent on once they award and if other can be additional time once they are awarded. So, we have had several meetings with the MPO organization. We've taken our list of capital projects that we have started working on at the staff level. And we felt that, uh, the reconfiguration of Third Street with an addition of a trail would be the best project. Um, discussion was held around the connection of the High Trestle Trail. Um, they just didn't think that our application would score as well because we don't have the, uh, land acquired yet. So, I will turn it over to Kathleen to go over, um, the project itself, but do you guys have any questions about the grant, um, itself, process?
I do. So, one, is that something that we've done before, I think that's not for you as much as this for Kathleen, and two, is it always four or five years out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and they say we've never applied. I don't know how accurate that is, um, but that's what the MPO organization is with us.
I started talking to MPO staff back in March this year and can confirm that the city of cities never applied for any kind of MPO funding. And during that, those initial conversations, this one came up frequently, as well as the trail and some other projects and Third Street just seemed to make sense. It's a major roadway project, uh, with some realignment in there and also has that trail connectivity which helps us for future projects.
Yeah, I, no, I, I totally trust the perspective on which one would score and which one to use, I just.
Yeah, they, they had no recollection of us ever applying.
Well, I know it hasn't happened in twenty-eight.
Yeah, so it's probably never happened.
This is amazing based on the, um, our, always our focus on trying to get grant money and, and matching especially money. And, uh, so, this, I think this is a great step in the right direction, as is lots of other things, but, uh, this is a great opportunity, no matter if it's four years, five years. It's still there, right? So we have a future and we can talk, uh, about what we're gonna do that has not happened.
Yeah, it is, and I need to be more forward thinking that just, you know, when we, my perspective was that, you know, every rock's been uncovered and everything's been tried. It just seems like more and more the case that that wasn't the way, so I'm, again, I don't wanna bury in the lead here, but, uh, cause this is a, a good step forward, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing this project does is it, it kind of, uh, allows the city to apply for a different pool of money than the tr- just the trail project. This is like, it's a larger bucket, if you will, because of the street improvements that's coupled with it. Um, the, the trail project, um, we'd worked on the north side, or the North Third Street Trail Project, a concept back in two thousand eleven. With, at that time, there was the thinking that there might be an application, but it didn't move forward. Um, and at that point in time, that, the trail was six hundred, six hundred nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars just for the trail alone, just I guess to put a little bit of perspective. And that was in two thousand eleven dollars. I kinda did a quick calculation and it, but that, just the trail alone, project that we looked at back then, uh, in twenty twenty-four dollars, the, we're nine hundred thousand dollars now. So, it lets you know that the trail is still, you know, nearly half of, of what, uh, the, the overall, uh, cost opinion is. Uh, the, the project itself, we did.
With some acquis- sorry to interrupt, but with some acquisition.
Yeah, what, yeah, we, well, what we did, we did two different options. The first one was more similar to the, the project that we did in two thousand eleven, which did have, uh, the acquisition of three easements in front yards for the trail, plus an easement, um, from NAP properties to the north, uh, south of Big Creek Technology Campus, but north of Dor Frank Ankers. Um, so it included those trail easements as well as some easements for some storm sewer and kinda to correct some drainage issues along there. Um, so that, that was the option one, um, which is the lesser expensive option. Both projects do include the overlay from, um, Third Street, essentially starting at, um, uh, the, the four-way stop, the colored concrete right here at Broadway, and extending all the way up, but then including a reconstruction section, uh, just north of North Side Drive where there's a tight curve in there. Uh, the fir- the first option includes more of a minimal reconstruction. Um, and then the second option, um, in- includes a longer reconstruction, which actually reconfigures the intersection a little bit nicer, makes it a little bit more square than it is now. Uh, also corrects, um, if you recall, the, the north leg of that intersection is a bit small for like semis, so it does, it corrects that issue as well. Um, both options do square up where the trail would cross to put, to place the Kiwanis Trail Crossing, uh, closer to where the stop bar would be, to create that, make it create, uh, more safe crosswalk there. Is the, the trail where it crosses now is back away from the intersection, so it's not as safe a location. Um, the second option, however, has a longer, uh, reconstruction section, like I said, does square up the intersection a little bit better. It pulls the trail in enough that it doesn't, that no easements are necessary for the trail from the three front yards, uh, that are in Dor Frank Ankers. Still need the one from NAP properties, but that's on an undeveloped area. Anyway, it's on the, the, because there's, because of the creek in there, it doesn't impact development of that parcel, so it'd be a fifteen foot. Um, it was still, both, both projects would require some storm sewer easements just to make sure, take care of the grading and, and drainage issues there to make that work. Um, a curb, the, the area where the, um, reconstruction section is would have curb and gutter on, on both sides of the road. Uh, as you get to the north and south of that, the overlay would not, but I would put a, a curb through that, uh, through the area where there's the tight radius now. Lengthen, lengthens that radius from about seven hundred and fifty feet to like seventeen hundred feet, so it does make it a lot, a lot smoother of a curve there. And like I said, it squares up the intersection. And then with the addition of a curb, that kinda helps. It helps that situation there, whereas I understand it's both gone off that pavement, so, um, all of those things would help correct that and, and as well as correcting that intersection. Um, the option one in twenty twenty-four dollars is, uh, one point nine seven seven million dollars, where option two, which is the larger reconstruction, is two point one one four million dollars. Um, it doesn't go up as much as you might think and part of it, I mean, just because of the longer reconstruction, part of it is because a little bit less money is needed to keep the re- I mean, for temporary construction measures and construction staging. Because we'd be able to use existing pavement to stage it and while keeping, uh, all the, the full, or at least one lane of the intersection open at all times. We didn't really wanna, during the process, we didn't wanna close that whole intersection for three months or, or longer, so, um, more of the dollars in option two are for permanent improvements as opposed to construction staging and, and that kind of, so, um, so I mean, from our perspective, we recommend option two. Um, and in part because option one is dependent on easements that, for bike trails that you don't have, so.
I think fixing that corner is important. We get some money, we get call from a couple residents there every year.
Yeah, yeah. And if you're looking at your drawings, what you'll see is the, the reconstruction section is shown in a little bit lighter gray and then the darker gray is, is the old section.
Yeah, and so to piggyback on that, you know, so we've, we've had meetings with the MPO this year, I think starting clear back in like big March or something, I think Dylan and others. So, I know this has come up a couple of different times, but this area, yeah, seemingly had some good interest from them even back then, so.
Yeah, and from a conservation standpoint, it does, we do, are including a seven-foot wide grass strip between the pavement or curb and the trail to have some physical separation there as well. And that helps the, the, gain the support of Pope County Conservation, having it right on the pavement or bike lanes.
Kudos to Jeff, whoever was involved in this. It's, it's a need now, it's gonna be a need, you know, expedited by preview, so.
Yeah, one thing too, it is planned, uh, it would include a, uh, trail crossing at Vista Lake to the other side, so there's a gap there in the undeveloped part of Wolf Creek Townhomes. So whenever that section of Wolf Creek comes in, we'll need to make sure that that includes the ten, ten-foot trail section. And then obviously we'll have the ten, ten-foot trail section, uh, in Creekview Estates on the west side too, so it will at least provide that much linkage. But, but this would in fact, with the crossing, would link Wolf Creek, uh, Townhomes.
Yeah, and whatever else.
So not to get ahead of it, but, um, but we should, if it's gonna be four years out, then we can probably start then moving on. The next phase would be on our own, right? And I don't know if that would be also an MPO type project, this is like, you can only apply for this once every three years, or if it's something you do every year?
Apply every year.
Okay. So then we take this as base to, and take, use that for time to acquire the ground necessarily to get us out to High Trestle or start working on that anyway. Because, and I'm sure that's, that's a no-brainer, obviously, but just for those interested or watching or otherwise.
Well, we'll wanna prioritize our major projects. It may not be associated with this, next project might be another set down.
Absolutely, I'm saying just as continuation of this initiative specifically.
For MPO, it's all about scoring well to get, to get on that list, to get high on that list, so that you can get fun, you know?
Right, and that score should affect our major project schedule to coincide with flying.
Absolutely. Right. Yeah, so as we develop that CIP here in the next few months, that, that prioritization of projects in relation to funding is, is critical. We, we wanna make sure that we're moving all these pieces at the same, in different allotments of time, but with the funding strategies in place.
The application itself goes in in mid-January, but I, I don't know if we've actually seen the application form yet. It wasn't available online the last I checked.
They just opened it.
Oh, did they?
Yep, they just opened it, um, so it is available and I think the deadlines change twenty-second, third, but, um, so you guys understand the match requirement. They fund eighty percent, we have twenty percent.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion on the resolution that it's option one or option two?
Yes.
Okay, that, so, yeah, so that, uh, fourth whereas does mention option one or option two, so you guys can put in percentage amount. So I guess whoever makes the motion, we just need to clarify whether you wanna do option one or two. And I would take a motion.
Well, the only differentiation is, if the major differentiation is the curb at North Side, what's, what's pros and cons?
The, the major difference is option two has a longer reconstruction section, so it squares up the North Side Drive, um, east, uh, North Third intersection a little better. So it improves that intersection a little more than the other one. It also means that the, that it, because you're making a lo- a smoother curb, it pulls it a little bit closer to the center of the right-of-way. Look at the plans, you can see it's, uh, and which that then means that the trail can be within the right-of-way instead of in the front yards. So it kind of gives that space there. Uh, the property on the other side is owned by the city, so there's not, I mean, we're still within the right-of-way, but even still, there is not any properties on the other side that would have a, a detrimental impact by moving it, so.
Less intrusive to the whole.
Yes, yes.
Option two is gonna be, yeah, I think. Uh, motion to, here, uh, resolution two thousand nineteen one fourteen, uh, with option two as provided by staff for the surface transportation block grant funding.
Second.
Questions, discussion, roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Motion carries. Next item, first reading of ordinance two thousand twenty-one hundred, parking regulations. Who gets this one? Looking at each other, yeah.
Um, we have battled over the course of the last couple of summers specifically, um, where the, we're having complaints about trailers, campers, boats being left on the streets for extended periods of time. And the way our ordinance is currently written, it did not give any enforcement options. So after working with Amy, um, this is similar to what Ankeny has in their ordinance, it will allow us then, if we receive complaints, to follow up and get people to move their stuff after two hours, basically, so things can't sit on the road for weeks on end.
I read it, but does it have a clause in there? I read it, so I detained it, obviously, but does it have a clause in there for, uh, construction areas?
It's two hours of loading, unloading, so it, it can't stay there all day. But the concept is it can be there, get your stuff off of it, move it to private property or out of the neighborhood and then you can come back.
So that's a kind of big, if somebody complains though, it's not just gonna be randomly enforced by people that are in a.
And this is specific to unhitched, let me rephrase. So if a truck is attached to a trailer, it can stay there for up to forty-eight hours, but if it's an unhitched trailer, it can only be there for two hours.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was just thinking about construction.
Yes. I can say a little quick, we have an issue with some of the contractors, they'll leave it, they'll just store a trailer on a city street when they go work other job sites until they need it again. And that's what I feel like, like that doesn't help us about that as well. Don't mean to interrupt, but.
Did seem like there were some boats this summer too, that was sitting in some areas.
Yeah.
Well, Dave did on the area that I was concerned in, to the extent that our role here bleeds over into making suggestions on the enforcement. I think that the will of the people is strict enforcement to send a message, cause I've heard a lot of the same. I will, uh, make a motion to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-one hundred.
First reading.
First reading.
Second.
Discussion questions? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Snyder and Associates invoice for October services in the amount of twenty-eight thousand two hundred ninety dollars seventy-five cents.
We'll do approve.
Second, roll call, please.
DeVorec?
Yes.
Vogel? Captain? Walters?
Stand.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item, City Clerk's Office Reconfiguration Project Not to Exceed Fifteen Thousand Dollars. Do you want this one?
Yeah, I'll, I'm gonna hand it over.
You're gonna tag team it on.
I'm gonna hand it over to Trace here, but, um, I've had a chance, I believe, to talk to all of you about this, but, um, staff has been talking about reconfiguring of the City Clerk's office. Um, and essentially making it more secure so that the public doesn't have access to private working spaces. Um, so we've got some rough estimates together for this evening. I think, uh, the agenda says up to fifteen thousand dollars. We do think that's very high. We can keep this, uh, little project, um, under that budget, but I'm gonna let Trace talk a little bit.
So this was one of my concerns my first year here is gee, but we've looked at some different options over the years and they've always been prohibitively expensive. That we've looked at doing ballistic protection and trouble with moving. And so, when Chelsea started, we brought the subject up again and said, well, if we can't afford to do the ballistic, at least let's restrict movement so people can't come back there, you know, whenever they want to. So I went back and looked at some of our call logs, just from my personal memory as well. We've obviously never had anybody come in here with a gun, but we had a couple, had a domestic back parking lot. The gal chased the guy with a knife and, and there was no way to stop them. They didn't go behind the counter, but there's no way to stop them if they wanted to. And she was trying to stab him, she'd slashed, all four of us tired, ripped his shirt off and, and was trying to catch him. He ran in here to, in the way, and we apprehended him right away, just hope that. And so that's more of the extreme ones, but, uh, Jenny had a gentleman come in here intoxicated in the middle of the day and come around the counter, attempts to put hands on her and we had to go and arrest him. And two other times personally, I've had to, um, tell people to leave City Hall or to stop frantic and yelling at Jenny and or Becky. And Carol, that was even one day when she, she first started, um, I happened to be over here running, the gentleman was getting out of hand. So it happens pretty frequently and this will give them a much safer work environment. It'll also, I'm not on the reconfiguration of it, cause I was just handling a security park. But it'll make the area back here much more effective for, uh, for, uh, these two as well, for.
And Trace, I think this is pre-year time, but Mike, you may be able to help me on this from the safe, there was a safety committee that you guys had made this recommendation a few years ago. And if I remember right, there was even money that was set aside to do this. Um, I know Dan was passing, passionate about it at the time, so this has been thrown around here for quite some time.
Yeah, we did a lot of research and came up some very good bids from contractors for different parts of it. So it'll all be enclosed in glass and steel with a window here and the desk will be reconfigured where both of the ladies can see the front window as well, that are workflow area back there too. Do they have any questions?
Can't hurt be too safe and I, I hope this helps your, not that you can't take care of yourself, but, uh, no need, no need to put that, those skills in work during the day. So, uh, no, I think that's great and I'll make a motion.
Second, questions, discussion, roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
DeVorec?
Vogel?
Motion carries. Reports in particular, staff, anybody have anything for the good of the cost? Trace, you get your hand up. You should've just stayed.
I know, I totally.
You stood up and stood, this is the third time you stood up and stood and sat down today.
Just real quick, at a previous council meeting, a couple of months ago, we approved two part-timers for hired police department. And since then, one of them had pulled out of the process, just looked at the time requirements we were gonna have for him and decided it wasn't gonna be right for him. Likely he did that before it cost us anything, and you know, the psychological testing or body of year. So that was Justin Mack that was, we, we approved the hire and then, um, Stephanie Braun, the retired charge of maintenance, is going through the process and she'll be starting soon. If you guys see a female officer around in uniform, say hi to her. She's retired from Ankeny after twenty years and she is the school district safety and security coordinator now for the Ankeny schools. But, um, her good thing about her apartment, I've known her for most of both our careers, so she wants to still be on the uniform and go work too, so she'll help us out with part-time.
Thanks. Anybody else? Staff-wise? Nobody, nobody, nobody? Rob, it's her and you're in.
Um, the other thing I wanna mention, so we, in the consent agenda, we approved the documentation from the goal-setting report and talked to Chelsea about this a little bit. I, I love the dialogue that night. I hope it's, it's the first step in a series of dialogue, um, around what we wanna do. In particular, uh, looking at the ranking that we did, there was a number of things that, uh, not a number of things, a few things that were a higher priority from the staff perspective than on the council side. And, and I, I don't think there's anything wrong with that as long as we make sure to, to revisit some of those things and, and marry up, um, the two perspectives. So, um, again, I think this was a good, um, first step rather than the self-contained step. So, um, just wanna make sure that I'm understanding some of the needs and, and I know you guys are well advocating for your departments and kinda get to a good point. Looking forward to the, uh, future steps.
I'd just like to follow up with what Rob said. Uh, I had a good example of it here tonight, as Mike talked about. We approved that, proved as a council approved spending that money and it never happened. And, uh, I don't think that's gonna be a problem from now on, moving forward, and I think this dialogue that Rob was talking about will help. And, uh, one of the things that was brought up in, in that report was how, uh, somebody thought we should stick with making the rules and somebody else should be right. But sometimes we approve things, they don't happen, so we have to keep bringing them up. And I'm, I'm not pointing that at anybody that works here, but it's just a fact of life and that's why we ask questions to make sure these things happen. And also I'd like to, all the volunteers that are, that have been along, been around, have been around for so long, in an outgoing way, I understand it. And I wanna make sure we do a, a good thank you to those people because we all know it gets harder all the time to get volunteers for anything and everything.
We'll have a letter going out to all. Yeah?
Just square lining, as always. Good job to everybody that puts that on. I know a lot of hard work went into that and we finally had good weather for one of our events. But again, thanks for all the, um, staff that helped make it a success as well as volunteers.
Uh, echoing Rob and, and Ron regarding goal-setting and also the volunteers' commitment, uh, cause we couldn't do the, couldn't do the things we do without people volunteering. Also wanted to, I'm very passionate about, obviously, the people that, that are here at the, the city and doing a good job at redefining what that means. And so the, uh, job descriptions that were re, redone in the, that we approved in the consent agenda, uh, those are right along the lines of where we need to be going with policies, procedures. You know, we've, we've done, redone the, the handbook in several different areas and heard great things about that from our members, so let's, good job to you and to everybody else that's helped put those together, making them, uh, for a twentieth century. As we know, we haven't quite been there, uh, in the past, so thanks for that. And, uh, here's to twenty twenty.
Yeah, you have anything?
I'm just gonna touch, based on the goal-setting report, um, it's such an important document. We will do our best to advertise that to the public. The public needs to see that document. They need to see what the goals are of the council and hold us accountable. So we've set goals now and, um, we need to follow through with them. So I just wanted to kind of touch on that topic, but it'll be on the website. We'll try to get it out there as much as we can so that various people can read it throughout town.
Or are we starting to pick away at some of them?
Yep.
Yeah, some of them are already up.
Yep. Anything else from you?
Nope, that's it.
Great, so along those lines, one of the things that was mentioned in the goals are one of the things that I think requested had been done, is kind of a process flow from rotation particularly through, and we've been working on this for the past several years. We started with actually moving seats up here and having pro tem sit here, and then we started working on our boards and commissions and having a rotating chair through that person. Last year, we worked through having a rotation through finance and personnel. Braun had been on personnel for a long, long time.
Since we hired our first employee.
So there you go, so we haven't necessarily done a great job of rotating through. So we've been working on this for a long time to, and I think we finally came up with something that's going to work. So here is what at least I think we foresee moving forward for the next two years, anyway, as far as what it's laid out. And all we did, we didn't look at who was in what seat, we really looked at just moving the various seats around. So it should spell you out pretty clearly. And as elections come and go, the plan will be to have the seat replaced, and so that person would just fall right in line with the seat. And that's similar to what we want our boards and commissions, library, I know we just had this conversation that they just, if somebody steps down from that seat, they'll fill the term there. So anyway, this should spell this out pretty clearly, this should spell out what you've got going for this year, or in twenty-twenty, this should spell out what you've got going in twenty-twenty-one. Describe, clearly spells out the process flow, liaisons, the pro tem, and committee appointments. Been trying to get here for a long time.
I, I just have one question.
Yeah.
In twenty-twenty-one, you sure you want me on the finance committee? You understand that I only get one check at a time and no credit cards.
Well, you just got re-elected, so you're, you're flowing through.
I'm going to be in charge of city money, but I can't be in charge of my own.
Well, your, your, your seat, it, it'll, it'll follow your seat, so.
That's fine.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Yep, so this should pretty well define, any questions that anybody has? If you have some or you see that we've missed something, let me know. Thanks Jenny for your work on putting together these fancy little charts that I came to, so good job. Questions? Comments? Concerns? Okay, the other thing is there's been a lot of question here recently regarding liaisons and what we were going to do with that. Do things happen earlier this year, some of that kind of fell. This was a memo that was put out January first of two thousand and fourteen, signed by me, but I clearly don't remember doing it. I think this was a carryover from our previous administration. This needs some cleanup, and there will be cleanup done, Chelsea and I have already talked about it. We're going to actually include this in some work that we're doing right now on our current council policies and procedures, right? Is that which one I'm talking about? Okay, thank you. And so we will include this in that, so it won't be in the form of a memo, but this is kind of just a good guide. And again, this is something that's been around since two thousand and fourteen. If you haven't seen it, I've forgotten that it existed, that's just kind of a good guide for those of you who are liaisons. And any questions that you might have regarding that? Like I said, we're going to clean that up a little bit, there are some things in there that need to be changed, and terminology and some other things, but I'm fairly confident this was a carryover from Mayor Hirons at the time. It was just odd that it was dated the first day of my first term from two thousand and fourteen, so. Anyway, if there's any questions there, you can let me know that too, but it kind of gives a good guide as far as what the expectation is, liaison. Questions, feelings, comments? Okay, easy enough. Great job, we're all involved with square lighting. Mike, it's my one time of year that I get to publicly stand in front of, thank your guys, or your entire staff, sorry, that's right, but it's, um, great job. Sorry the countdown was messed up, but we'll blame that on Dennis. Yeah, let Dennis know that I said that publicly, but no, great job by everybody involved, and you guys do take a lot of passion, and I appreciate it. With that, that's it for the year, happy holidays to everybody, and see you in twenty-twenty. Ron with that?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ron, Rob, and Dave, you guys swore in. I think it was, that was the person that I, I think it was.
We're down to the Hirons.
Okay, yeah, because, oh, did he? Okay, okay, well, this was, this, I, it was just odd that it was like fourteen, so.